This meeting of the Gasson City Council now come to order and I chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today and Councilman Reed is attending a meeting here locally and he may join us before the meeting ends. And we do have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, and I'll ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's praise the heavenly Father. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessing that you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you continue to bestow your blessings upon us all. We ask you to please protect those people who are in harm's way, those people who are serving our country in countries around the world. We ask that you would be with all our leaders, national, state, and local, in order that they may make the perfect decisions for us. We will continue to give you all the praise, these blessed persons in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where you go.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting on August the 2nd.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take your vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July the 29th through August the 4th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
No.
Unfinished business, we have none. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised, a Kentucky public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1526 Roebuck Street in District One. The last known owners were Sonny Darrell Hasser and the State of Alabama Department of Revenue. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in October of 2009, there've been no improvements, there are no permits as of yesterday, we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1010 Shell Road in District One. The last known owners are State of Alabama and Rita McCants. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we've been working this case since December of 2010, there've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 639 Abercrombie Street, District Three. The last known owners are Samuel White and care of Mary Dale Williams. Mary Dale Williams. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Would you come forwards, please?
To the mic over here.
State your name and address to the city clerk.
Yeah, Donald Harville, 639 Abercrombie. I've been working on that house and I don't know what the problem is.
I don't know where your mic's on.
My name is Donald Harville, 639 Abercrombie.
I've been working on it and I don't think wrong with it when the storm come through it blow little roof, debris off the roof, but my house is in better shape than a bunch of these houses around here, they wanna do stuff too. They tore down one of my houses on 2909 Abercrombie Street, took all my material out of it and took a 1977 Chevrolet Capri Impel if and under the porch of it while I was locked up. And I'm willing to work on my own house on the Abercrombie Street.
Okay.
How do you spell your last name?
Donald Harville.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else like to speak in opposition to it? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in September, I'm sorry, yes, in September 2009, there've been a couple of building permits taken out. Gentleman that just spoke, I'm not sure where his involvement in this property lies, he's not listed in the title opinion or at the tax assessor's office, but, you know, either way, we just, and the neighbors besides our department would like to see the project finished. You can see the interior of the house is still in very bad shape, it's not secure, it's open. The immediate neighbors are concerned with people going in and out, and we have found that to be the case with the evidence there. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
Sir, there's been activity on this property since September of 2009. Do you have an ownership interest in it?
Yeah, he's the owner. Let me, I'm gonna make a recommendation here in a minute, but I have a question. You said that one of your houses they tore down and there was a car?
They took my car.
What did they do with all of that?
Cheltenham got the car, I don't know what they have on the material, but people that tagged it down, they took all of them out of the house.
And they took the car too?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought we always didn't do stuff like that, but anyway, let me.
The car, the car doesn't have a proper tag on it and don't run, then it's.
Public Works will not touch a vehicle. Normally what happens is we'll call dispatch, they'll send whoever's out up on the rotation out, and with a resolution, they have the opportunity to go and get it. And of course, the standard rules of possession would apply with a towing company, they'll keep them for so long, and if nobody comes forward, then they'll salvage you. They'll salvage you, okay. It was obvious, he said where he was, but we won't go into that. I'm gonna ask that we table this for seven days, it's obviously, Brian, there looks like there's been a change of ownership or something here, and just give you an opportunity to look into it. I've got the same complaints that you've got, but if we got a different ownership now, we need to make sure we're doing it the right way. Otherwise, we'll be buying him another house, so I'm gonna ask for a seven-day table.
Second.
Before you did that, you need to get in touch with, y'all need to talk before, yeah, you need to talk with him, so after the meeting here, you need to talk with him, and then we'll get it worked out. Motion is second table.
Okay, we'll take the vote on the motion to table.
Yes, sir, those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table the resolution for seven days.
And please understand, this is your councilman extending himself to some degree to allow for a seven-day tabling of this issue. It's been a longstanding, obviously, it's been a longstanding case for Public Works, so you'll make sure today to get with the Building Department, they'll be sure to give you a path to maintaining your property. Otherwise, we'll be back here in seven days addressing this issue again.
Yeah, it's been, it's been the object of complaints to both Brian, myself, and everything else, but I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way, and based on what I just heard here today, it sounds like we've got a change of ownership, and Roger can tell you, we don't need to jump into it, is that right, Mr. Attorney, if that's the case?
How long have you owned the property?
We need to know, absolutely, all right.
I do have a question. How long have you owned the property, sir? Thank you, Brian. Okay, okay.
That's not an issue, don't worry about it. If, we've had people come up here, Billy.
Yeah, I know, but I still, I still, for my own satisfaction, you know, I have, I don't have a problem with him telling me how long he's owned the property.
Oh, no, I don't either, I'm just saying though, but the law is clear, if they sold it the day before they come up here, we have to start the process all over.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, we get into legal problems, and we pay for some old houses that we don't need to be paying for, that's basically what I'm saying, yeah, okay. Because people don't record their deeds and Brian don't have any way of finding that out, otherwise, if it's not recorded, and people will do that. We've got slum lords who will sell a house two days before the hearing, and then we go through the process and get ready to do them, and then they sell it back to the guy two days before the hearing, and that's how a lot of these things stay out there, so that's why I was saying, you know, how long you own it is not the issue. The issue is, if it's a different owner, we need to make sure we do the legal and the right thing to do, otherwise, we get ourselves in a bind.
Okay, 12 is a resolution authorizing participation in the hardest-hit Alabama program. This relates to individuals who have borrowed money from the city through the Community Development Program. TARP funds from the U.S. Treasury Department will allow the city to provide assistance to eligible homeowners who have mortgages and may be in danger of foreclosure. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
No. Go ahead. Mr. President, I promise we're not gonna try to talk through every item, but I think it's important for the public to know that this is, this is actually a program that's designed to support those who, through a lot of the most recent devastation relative to some of our bad weather, that this gives them an opportunity to avoid foreclosure, or at least at some level, get some support in avoiding foreclosure. So this is very much a good program, and this gives our Community Development Department the opportunity to secure funds by participating in this program.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that there's also a program available, and I don't know how we can publicize it anymore, through the Federal Home Loan Bank of Atlanta and its bank members, and we have several banks here in the city that are members of the Federal Home Loan Bank system, and what happens is, there's funding available for foreclosure, recovery, there's monies available for rehab funds, and there are a number of other programs, first-time home buyers, but what I'm finding out or what I'm hearing is that a lot of the banks don't publicize and/or talk about it, that they are members of the bank and they can access those funds. So if you bank at one of these banks, you need to go in and ask those bankers or those loan officers, are they members, number one, of the Federal Home Loan Bank, and if so, number two, do they participate in these programs? And number three, if they don't, then you wanna know why they don't participate, because those are dollars out there that you can access through that bank to help you in the first-time home buyers, I think it's $7,500. Housing rehab is up to $15,000. Some of these you have to do matching, and some of them are just, you don't have to do any matching at all, so you just need to talk with your local bankers and find out, and I think several of the local banks are members of the Federal Home Loan Bank.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do wanna correct something I said earlier, and this is not just related to the, those impacted by income, whether this is those who need economic and financial assistance relative to unemployment and other diverse or adverse economic situations.
Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is a resolution authorizing deed for public right-of-way for right-turn lane from Hood Avenue onto East Broad Street. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
14 is a resolution authorizing tax abatement agreement with Prince Metal Stapping USA. This corrects an earlier resolution, an agreement to include abatement of mortgage and recording taxes. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution authorizing tax abatement agreement with Rod Fram Alabama LLC. This corrects an earlier resolution, an agreement to include abatement of mortgage and recording taxes. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
16 is a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the City of Gasson and Edward County Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. This establishes guidelines for RSVP volunteers to participate in parks and recreation activities and programs at City Hall and the Senior Activity Center on an ad needs basis. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an item, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. This is authorizing agreement with Air Environment for the daily monitoring, for testing of the asbestos removal at the General Forest School.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve.
Second. Any discussion?
This is, according to the Engineering Department, this is something we have to do to monitor the quality of air and the removal of the asbestos over at the old General Forest School, and it's, I guess it's required by the phase, is that correct, Chad? That's a federal requirement, so we're just doing what we gotta do.
I missed pre-council, but is this the pre to demolishing the front part of the old school, maybe?
Yeah, this is.
Get that asbestos out before.
Yeah, before they can do anything.
Have we got a time line on it?
Chad gave us one. No.
Well, then I better retract that.
This one is 45 working days for the asbestos, and then we can move on to the demolition phase.
Yeah.
Sorry I wasn't there.
But that's okay.
This is strictly a safety, safety issue here, purely safety for the, for the public, public safety issue.
But since you missed that part of it, we tried to get Chad locked out on some deadlines on several projects, like Miggin and Airport, and he just wouldn't do it, so good to see he's coming around now.
Chad is, I like Chad, he's a smart person.
Yeah, well, he gave us a 45-day on this one.
He knows not to lock down himself.
Good politician.
Moving on, is any other serious discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committee, board, are there any? Citizens request, Janice Sherrill Sidewalk Yard Sale on Broad Street, is she here?
She's there.
Yeah, let's talk about that sale.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Janice Sherrill, I'm the owner of Ramona's La Diva Boutique on 622 Broad Street. The reason why I'm here this morning addressing the council is because we come up with a, from our DGI connection meeting every Wednesday, I came up with an idea for a sidewalk yard sale, and the reason why we're doing this is to try to bring as many people and citizens in Gasson and the surrounding areas downtown to visit with the new, with the new businesses, develop relationships with us downtown, and to provide something that's different. And the reason why we're doing this is also the weekend right before school starts, and doing this as a yard sale, you can come down and get quite a bit of good items. And the reason why I'm here today addressing the council is because I want each and every one of you to take a part in this downtown yard sale, to make it a huge success. And by doing so, I'm asking you to pull out your cellphones, your contacts, and start texting, contacting all your family members, your friends, your business associates, and we're trying to get the word out, because I really and truly want this to be an awesome event. Thursday night, you will begin to see tents going up, we're gonna have something cool to drink on each block, we're gonna have, this is not only for Broad Street, this is for Broad and beyond, so if you're crazy about Italian ices, then come visit us on the 600 block. If you like homemade lemonade, then you go on Court Street. BB and T have their special water, whatever it is, I don't know, but it's called BB and T's special water. So we have so many things going on. Also, Jefferson is providing iced tea at a dollar, so come on, we want everyone in the City of Gasson and the surrounding areas to come out and make this a huge event, and thank you for your time.
Hey, give us the date again.
I'm sorry?
August 12th.
I'm sorry, the dates are August the 12th, and this is on a Friday, from 10 to 6, and also on Saturday from 10 to 4.
That's this weekend.
That's this weekend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Remarks by the mayor and the council, Billy, I'll let you start today.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. President. I would, I just have one, two things. Back to school starts Monday, our kids will be back in school on this Monday, this coming Monday, and last week, we were, we had visitors here, Dr., Cynthia Toz, Dr. Toz was here to tell us about the Million Father March, asking all fathers, grandfathers, uncles, and to accompany your child or guarding, or a person that you're guarding to school next Monday, and I would just like to encourage all the fathers in the city to, fathers and relatives in the city to be present Monday when your child go to school. Take your child to school Monday and let's have a good showing there. I will be at Dunleah School that Monday morning, welcoming students back to school. And the other thing that I have is I will be at a District One meeting at 6 o'clock on next Monday. District One meeting at East Gasson Community Center, 6 o'clock on Monday. Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. President, and for the record, I don't think I've been allowed to go first yet, so just kinda keep that in mind for next week, but just thought I'd throw that out there.
I don't want you to be left there.
So, just a couple things, grass cutting, with all the water, the rain that we've gotten, and just a lot of the conditions and the activity that's, that have been present in our communities and in our districts over the last few weeks, we're getting a lot of calls, not just myself, but I think all of the councilmen are getting a lot of calls regarding grass cutting and cleanup activity, limbs down, trees down, and all of that kind of activity, and that's fine, you know, those folks that are calling are not doing anything wrong, so I don't wanna give that impression. But I do wanna clarify something, and we're gonna have a Community Development Committee meeting in a couple of weeks, not next week, but the week following, to kinda address some of these items and to speak to the proper flow of activity when you have these kind of concerns in your communities. The city is not the primary source of grass cutting on private property, and I think people really need to understand that. You know, this process basically involves the city when it's broken down, when people aren't keeping their private property up, and then the city has to get involved, and it becomes more of an enforcement act as opposed to a, as opposed to just maintaining a clean, clean private property. So please understand that, please know that we have individuals at City Hall that are responsible for going around and identifying those nuisances that need, that have to be abated, whether it be dwellings or grass cutting, but there are definitely more, and this is unfortunate, but there are definitely more properties than there, than there are folks to cover them, so sometimes that process can be very slow, but we ask that you continue to raise those concern, concerns with us and understand that it takes time to address them, but we will be addressing them. And again, one of the main purposes for the committee meeting is gonna be to make sure people understand this process and understand how that process works and how it involves the city. And the last thing I wanted to make everyone aware of or remind folks of is that this week is National Healthcare Awareness Week, so there will be a number of activities throughout the city that involve healthcare awareness, and I think the mayor will be supporting a couple of those events this week, and Quality Life Health Services in particular is gonna be having some events at a number of their locations, so please be sure to support those where you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I basically don't have a whole lot to say today, other than the fact that I wanna make sure we understand that through the process of nuisances and abatement, that we, we have a process we have to go through, and it's obviously with this particular piece of property that is in my district, there's been a change of ownership, and I've had, I think, at least two incidents in my, my district where we gone in and didn't do our proper due diligence, tore down some houses, and it's cost the city, and I just don't want that situation to happen to us this time around. That's one of the reasons why I want to table this for seven days, to make sure that we do it right and don't get ourselves in a bind again, we can't afford to be doing that. And there was one other piece of property that on that list I looked at, Brian, I was intending to ask when it came up, is that house possible, I know y'all still doing it, possible rehab contention? I know they do look at those houses to see if it's more feasible to spend a few dollars of rehab as opposed to doing anything else, so again, we're trying to work on the condition of the communities, hopefully in this Community Development Meeting, we're gonna address the issues of the city right-of-way. We've talked about that, we've sent too many mixed messages to the citizens, and a lot of them don't wanna cut the grass in the city right-of-way, and the reason for that is because sometimes there's activities going on out there and the city tell them, that's the city right-of-way, you can't, you don't have a right to do anything out there. Well, if I don't have a right to do anything out there, why should I cut the grass? And so we've gotta come to some type of agreement or some type of solution, so we can get the citizens to start cutting that grass past their sidewalk, as opposed to just letting it grow up and look ugly, particularly when, you know, they keep their lungs manicured and nice, and then you go cross the sidewalk out there where it's the city right-of-way and it's ugly. We just don't have the means and the money to keep up all those right-of-ways, so we've gotta come to an agreement with the citizens to make sure they understand that, you know, it would be to their benefit and to the city's
that, you know, it would be to their benefit and to the city's benefit if they cut the right-of-way in front of their houses. So hopefully, we can work that out.
It's a law, Ron. It's a law.
What's the law?
They're supposed to keep it up.
Well, it might be a law, but if I go and put a sign out in the city's right-of-way, and I'll use it, for instance, particularly a political sign, because I know that to be a fact, the city comes along and takes it up, because that's their right-of-way. Well, if it's your property and your right-of-way, you ought to keep it up. That's the thinking of some of the people. But then you say we got a law that they should keep it up. So, you know, you, you're sending mixed messages, so we got to do something to, 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 to get that.
I'd just like to encourage everybody to go out to the sidewalk sale this coming weekend. It's very important that you, you know, you ride across the country and you see so many towns our size boarded up and practically abandoned, and we're so lucky here in Gaston to have a group of merchants who promote their, their businesses, and we have a vital downtown that we should be very proud of. So I, if you trade with a chain, your money leaves town. Trade with your local people, it stays right here. So it's very important, and the more we trade with locals, the stronger we become and, and the more successful we all are, so I encourage you, trade downtown. Thank you.
I want to tell Janice Sherrill, anytime you mention yard sale, Ben will be there. I like yard sale. I just want to be sure, they'll, they'll, are we gonna have barbecue? Am Ed Jones, is he gonna be there to give us a little barbecue along with that?
I don't think they're gonna-
We're not too sure about that.
I don't think they're gonna be there.
Did you say give or say?
Well, anytime any of us go anywhere, we eat. We know that, no? So I just want to make sure we have that. Listen, I apologize for not being here to pre-council this morning, but I know good and well that Chad Hare did me proud, because whatever y'all did to him, I'm sure he handled it right.
He did indeed.
He's a good man.
He did me proud.
I did go to a meeting, it was very, very informative, and I think y'all would appreciate the commi- Mental Health Commissioner came up to smelt her, and we had a really good talk about the budgets, the shortfalls, what's gonna happen, and so on and so forth. I'll pass that along to y'all later, but it was very, very impressed, I was very impressed with her, that's all.
Ben, were you there as a city official or giving a patient's perspective, would you?
The minute she said psych, I knew I was home. But anyway, it was to the consumer's benefit that this lady came up, and I love level spending instead of proration, so that's what she passed on to. And I feel so much better after the medication. I'm good.
Mayor? You don't have anything? I don't have anything. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.